We're going to go ahead and get started. We sent you out a read ahead, which we have done in the past where we talk about the department, departments, kind of an update overview of their accomplishments for the year as well as their focus areas for the coming budget year. So you all have that. You can look through that. Give us any comments or feedback that you would like. What we thought we would do for this next forty-five minutes to an hour is give you a financial overview. Kind of in preparation, we do have another meeting scheduled in a week. And then we'll have the budget presentations currently scheduled. We have it on the calendar for I think the third, third week in May. So we're, we're about five weeks out before we actually present the final recommended budget. So we've got some opportunities here at council. We're here with you, the latest and greatest on the numbers, which will continue to refine in the coming weeks. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Karen Crawford, and she's going to walk through the latest and greatest on the numbers.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
As, as John was mentioning, the departments have provided a lot of good information. We want to thank them for all their hard work, for providing not only some accomplishments from 2023, but also the priorities and goals for 2024. So that's in that document I sent to you last week. As we start looking at the general fund and our budget assumptions, our salary and wage baseline budget has increased by seven point six percent from 2023 to 2024. That is due mainly to our COLA increase and salary adjustments during the year. In January, we also had a market study that increased our salaries as well. So we're budgeting for that for '24. In addition, PIBA has not planned for an increase past FY 2023, but we are assuming a one percent increase in our budget just because of the timing of when it's usually presented to us is late May or June. And so we are assuming one percent in our budget this year. Health insurance, that number is budgeted to increase at seven point five percent, and that is just for half the year, beginning January the first, 2024. And we usually have that information in the fall. We know what that number will actually be. This past year, it was actually zero, as you recall. So that was great. Fuel is budgeted to increase fourteen point four percent for the new year, and we base that on consumption and average pricing for our fuel. Risk charges are budgeted to increase nine point four percent, and that relates to rising salary levels for our workers' comp and then other claims experience for the other insurance we have.
Are these fairly consistent with prior years?
The assumptions are yes.
Karen, I do have a question.
Yes, sure to do.
You jinxed it. So I would assume that COLA, with maybe only a few exceptions, is across the workforce.
Correct.
The market study that you reference, is that also across our personnel or did it focus more specifically on certain divisional areas?
It was a large cross-section of most of the city employees except for police and fire. They have been going through their step programs.
Right. They have a way in some way.
Yep. Our revenue assumptions, moving to those. We have budgeted a seven point six percent increase for our property taxes. Business license and permits, we're budgeting a six point eight percent increase. Our transfers in from other funds, we're budgeting an increase of thirty-three point nine percent, which is led by hospitality taxes. We'll talk about that a little bit later. And then our other revenues, we have a large increase there of sixty-two point five percent, but that is running from our interest earnings. That's those interest earnings going up. Yes.
So I want to get this crystal clear. Line one, that property tax budgeted increase, the combination of new property on the books. And this, would this be the first year we're feeling the reassessment?
No.
The county does, or second year? Or third?
Tax year 2022 was the reassessment year. No, 2021.
It was delayed because.
It was delayed because of COVID. So tax year 21 would have been our fiscal year 22.
Okay.
So this is our second.
Our second year feeling it. That is not because a tax increase has been voted on, a millage increase has been voted on.
Correct.
Adding to the roll.
And it's growth.
Clear on.
This is growth.
So it's growth in the city.
It's growth in the whole city. Yes.
Good question. Presuming that this is not the one that talks about in the county where they're saying they may end up raising.
So if the county's talking about raising property taxes, that's for the county. This is our city rate.
Okay, so we would not get portion of.
No, sir.
We all pay county taxes, so we all will have to pay for our own personal property. No, we don't get the city.
But we do not collect any of that.
It's largely due to growth of new property on the books.
Are we going to do a deeper dive into hospitality tax and why that increased in forty?
Yes.
Great segue.
Oh, please. Oh, please. Let's move over to our expenditure assumptions. We are assuming or budgeting for a net increase of twenty-two new full-time employees. And you see the breakdown here. That is offset by five unfilled positions. We have a planned four percent COLA increase on January the first. And just for your information, that accounts, each one percent accounts for a three hundred and twenty thousand dollar increase. Our CIP is currently funded at twelve point three million in FY '24, and that is reduced by one million in FY '23 from one year to the next.
Twelve point three. Yeah, these are above historical averages.
Yes.
Say that again. Above historical averages.
Yes.
Well, no, it's, my misreading, well, CIP is twelve point three reduced from thirteen.
Correct, but historical averages have been within the seven million dollar ranges.
There's money in there at Weyhampen. I don't know if I can see it.
Don't you care to re-?
Still working on that list.
That's right. That will be, hopefully next week we'll have that for you. Our transfer out to the solid waste fund is going to increase by one million to four point four million in 2024.
And what's, what's driving the increase?
Full staffing in that fund right now and capital purchases for new equipment there.
A little bit of an increase in the, the hollow charges. Yes, sir.
Didn't we have a fee increase?
We did. A one, a one dollar increase this year.
And when did that go into play?
Seven one of twenty-two.
And each dollar, Karen, equates to?
A hundred and ninety-seven thousand, roughly two hundred thousand.
Increase in that fund generates about.
Two hundred thousand a year.
And that was solid way to be.
Yes, okay.
That's impressive. You just threw all that.
She was ready. She was ready for that one. You're doing good so far, Karen. I'm impressed.
She knows her job.
Our capital outlay for '24 is set at four point nine million, and that includes both vehicle and various equipment replacement costs. Debt service planned for 2024 will include a debt issuance for City Hall. And that would be, our estimate right now is a five million dollar bond. And the total amount of debt service will be about four hundred thousand a year on that, just for your information. The neighborhood infrastructure bond round two, we would likely issue late in fiscal '24, end of '24, and we would not have debt service until 2025.
And we don't have any locked-in rate on that second.
No, we do not.
We're sort of back to the drawing board on that.
Back to the drawing board. And the estimate right now is at twenty million or very close to that number for the second round of the.
What was the first round?
Get into the budget. Hope we can spend some time on the neighborhood bond to remind everyone what it is and make sure our priorities are still lying there, what we want to see. I looked at it a couple of months ago. There's some things in there that we might want to do differently than we got in this year or two ago. Priorities. It's supposed to be, you know, whatever priorities in the neighborhoods, and so we might want to take a look at that. We talked about doing another similar type bond for open space and green space. The green bond should be, I think we're going to hear from the folks about how that might work. Same idea. We could accelerate the payments on.
Where do we stand on our bonding capacity right now?
Well, can I get back to the new, but the second part? So that's forty-eight total. That's just sounding higher than whatever that I'm getting. Well, twenty-eight was the first.
The first, the first touch was.
It was twenty-eight million, but that included nine million for the Halton Road campus.
Okay.
That was.
So nineteen plus twenty is thirty-nine, and that sounds more. Okay, gotcha.
Thirty-six point something.
Yep.
On the, on the previous slide, you had a bottom line revenue projection overall increasing nine point seven. I see there's not such a rolled up total projection of expense increases on this side. Any reason?
We're still working on that.
Yeah, we're just still, things are in flux.
To be determined. Too many expenses to tally.
We're still got.
What, what is, what is the approximate headcount of the police department for, for relative safety when we look at these two new police positions? No, I mean, I, I, well, I say ten. I'm just saying, how many, how many do we have currently on the?
We believe we have two hundred and thirty-three. Is that simple? Two hundred and twelve actual.
Okay, so that's a five percent on those increases?
Yeah. Four point seven.
I like the round.
Is that included in the seven point seven number? No?
These increases are not. That was base budget.
So I say again?
That was base budget. The first slide.
The seven point six.
So we have seven point six percent, just basic cost of living, and we're going to add whatever that equals for the new.
Right. The other thing to keep in mind, or that strikes me, particularly on police and fire, and I know on fire we have agreements with neighboring departments, but as we grow geographically through annexation, and I think today we have an eighteen acre, we have some big geographies being annexed today. That's that much more fire coverage needed, that much more police coverage needed. So it's not only the uptick in people moving here into the center, but it's the uptick in annexation. We can't, we have to add the services to support that added reality. It's people. I mean, we absolutely have to add.
I'm hoping that the eighty-eight acres of wood line won't cause too much.
Don't set that on fire.
Most of the annexations we've done so far, although geographic was huge, doesn't include that many people.
Doesn't, but there is fire in the woods.
Yeah.
And when something catches on fire, it doesn't matter. They got to be there.
On the five unfilled positions, is that straight out or is it specifically any one?
Oh, it's, it's across all departments.
Do we have intended to fill those back?
We're not, we're not, we're not ready to eliminate those positions. We're just suggesting right now we don't need to fill them.
Okay, I promise we'd move on to hospitality taxes. So we are assuming nine point nine percent growth in our revenues for that fund. Our CIP is currently budgeted at five point four million for FY '24. This is also assuming our Greenville Convention Center subsidy and our zoo operating subsidy at six hundred and fifty and two hundred thousand. The general fund, their operating subsidy is increasing by two point nine million from six point seven up to nine point six. Actually, it did. And so we have a normal increase. We're assuming growth because we fund various recreational type salaries out of there. So we build in growth for that each year, and we had, let's see. What was the other number? About four hundred thousand in equipment? No. Some number of equipment from Unity Park was also built into it, one million of it. The other one point nine million is our additional funding for the law enforcement personnel. We will use hospitality tax to backfill that. We have some restroom upgrades, fountain technician, and some various other items that are booked in to make that transfer into the general fund to subsidize it.
Start with size of hospitality tax.
This hospitality tax will be about sixteen point six or so million dollars in revenue this year. And so then we're going to take down.
Is it more than what we?
No, that's.
What we.
Yes, it is more than we projected last year.
About a million and a half more.
Yes. We had, we had budgeted for about fifteen point six. Which year? Yeah.
The Greenville, that's the convention center, the six hundred thousand dollars? That's considerably lower than it seems in the last few years, thankfully.
It's usually over a million.
No SFA, we don't know. HVAC's good, escalator's good.
The operating subsidy.
This is not.
Right, like capital. But that's a lower operating subsidy than I can ever recall. We've got a better project devotion to. Because it still costs us around numbers over a million. Why is it operating?
It is a different manage, it is a different management company. We also have in an older CIP project around three hundred and fifty thousand that's related to capital. And so we're giving that piece to them for the capital that they're asking to be fixed. You know, the, the capital needs for this year.
I'd say historically, this, this was our Ridge Road issue. You mean, bummer on fine and boom, we had that two million dollars for a roof. Came from hospitality, but it still hit us hard. The basic operating, this is great. These are really good numbers. Do they still have a church out there? Is that still arrangement?
They do.
Yes.
It's much smaller.
Smaller than it used to be. Yeah. A couple of years back, we were kind of, we were a little too dependent on that church being out there every Sunday. But saints will kind of leave themselves a week from now.
It did help during COVID. That was about the only revenue we got during COVID. So for most years, it was very helpful.
Yeah. Very grateful, yes.
Karen, you said, you said, and I might have misunderstood you. You said you were expecting fourteen million for the year for hospitality tax.
Sixteen million.
Sixteen million. Okay, good. Now that's what we're budgeted for, and we're ahead of budget. We're a little bit ahead of budget now.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. So what drives the assumption of revenue growth of nine point nine percent? Just added capacity and trends or?
Just our trend and what we've been, you know, our recovery after COVID.
Okay, you mentioned a one million dollar for equipment in Unity Park.
No, I said one million in, part of the two point nine increase from year over year. One million of it relates to what we currently already program in every year, and those costs going up, plus some additional capital items. For two hundred and seventy thousand, that was exactly what in Unity Park. You know, street sweeper, various other pieces of equipment. No, it's, yeah, it's maintenance related.
Okay, all right.
How much is, biggest they process, sixteen million a year, is how much we have in reserve projected over what our budget. That's the number we always.
So we also have to maintain, we, we plan to maintain five hundred thousand in a reserve, and then above that, we're required, because of our debt covenants, to hold out debt service requirements. So that amount each year is around one point three million. And so we have to hold both of those numbers.
We were doing that last year, though.
We always have to do that. Yes, we always have to do that.
I think the question, based on what we projected last year and then what we projected this year, will we?
Hold on one second.
Sorry, we're trying to see the header of the column.
Okay, so. So debt service is almost the same, right? Debt service, reserve, and five hundred thousand is the same, almost identical number year over year. We have more revenue coming in. We're budgeting for more revenue coming in. Higher expenses related to our big transfers out. And everything else seems.
No, one minute. Let me clarify what I'm asking. So one of the things we would, we have been concerned about was that we were still cutting close with our hospitality part. And my understanding and my recollection was that that was going to be the case for a couple of years, and then we forecasted beyond that, you know, a good bit of pushing to where we are. Based upon the numbers that you've given us, though, this time, it sounds like that cutting close over the next two years, we may have a little bit of pushing over those next two years that we're talking about.
Possibly. However, depending on what projects we engage in, that will take that down. For example, if we were to do, you know, any kind of future builds that we were talking about earlier, that would cut into that. So if we were to give any kind of.
Extra outlay to either of our parks that we're calling.
Consistently conservative.
Yeah.
Our current year, we've got about five million that's going out for CIP budget items. And so in the, in the past, and I think Matt had built in that it would drop down to about two million.
Yes, ma'am.
Just simply because of possible planned debt issuances in the future.
Yes, but from what you're telling us, it sounds like in that two million may be more. Assuming that, I'm saying, I'm assuming that we have not, assuming the outlays that we have, have as of today.
Do not change.
Resolve that we're going to go forward. Not, not anything we're thinking about doing, anything that. Based upon what we have gone for today, it sounds like we're going to have a little more pushing in that.
Yes.
Yes, sir. We built that in to get Y twenty-four. A part of that is going for those items that you saw in previous slides. Operating side, operating support, divisional headcount. We've already built that in, so that additional.
So we're taking that. So what we're going to invest in operating to, to help with the ongoing operating costs.
Yes.
Okay.
John Dorkin.
Yes.
Because you're the expert in the real monies. When is, what is the date when we would know about the date in the legislative session this year for S two eighty-four?
Sure. So S two eighty-four is in the House Ways and Means Committee. Has to be set for subcommittee. Has not, as far as I know, been set for subcommittee yet. The House is not.
Way in furlough this week?
House is in furlough this week, so they return a week from tomorrow, which then gives them twelve legislative days left before they adjourn on signing that. So starting next Tuesday, they have four weeks before they adjourn on signing that, which is May eleventh. But the important thing to note here is it's the first year of a two-year session.
Right, so it carry out.
So it carries over to January.
But it could, it could go into play this year.
Sure.
And that date is May eleventh, May.
May eleventh, Thursday, May.
So I, I will put this out there because we did have a free talk about this as an additional funding stream, but there should be a, a flexibility in the budget to be prepared, but if that does pass in the session. Then that is a revenue stream to consider for affordable housing. So the city manager and I have had discussions about that, and I certainly will be talking about that once we know what the House and the governor will.
Yeah, looks like we, if we just give it out, then we have vision to.
Thanks, Karen. All righty.
The Green, sorry, Greenville Zoo, this is operating subsidy, and then we also have a capital subsidy that we do.
Well, it all is included in this.
So just to, oh.
Capital projects.
I think they've had a banner year, and we'll, I think we plan to talk about the, some of the sub funds at next week's meeting. Would you hear more visibility on that? But last year was a, was a very good year.
And the gay one is Friday. Save a dance for me. You can't be fair. Good, thank you.
Okay, moving, moving on to the parking fund. We are exploring an increase in our maximum daily rates, our transit rates, and our monthly rates for the parking fund. As you know, we are looking at our current capacity, comparisons to private lots and what they're charging, as well as planning for new parking decks as needed for the city. Yes.
Can I just point out, I think we do a really good job. You know, you know, the Greenville Drive, if we go in there, the coags are still inexpensive. Hot dogs are still, still inexpensive compared to what MLB parks are, right? And I've always thought we did a really good job of keeping our parking for special events low so that folks, we don't have, we don't charge them a lot of money to come and spend money. So I think that's always a good, good thing. I don't know if we're talking about changing that here.
That is not in.
The daily.
Okay.
Look at garage capacity in the West End. That helps with our performance, if you will.
Well, I just keeping the, the special events low.
We haven't, we've had no discussions about.
Yeah. Well, it's even, it's kind of the same thing of why we as a city don't have meters downtown. Why are we going to charge people money to come and spend money? And I think that's. Yeah.
The private fund that they have in these states.
How many they have? Twenty. There's plenty twenty's.
Work for the people.
Okay, moving on to expenses. Our CIP and our other capital outlay within the parking fund is budgeted at one point seven million. And our current debt service will decline by two point eight million this year. It includes. Ma'am?
What, what's our current debt, what's it?
Parking.
Oh, please. I'm thinking.
Maybe five million, and it went down by that amount.
Yeah, it was coming off the road.
Yeah, I think, I think to this point, and we've asked for, we needed, I don't know how you plug it in there, but I, I would love a work session dedicated to all of our debt service by type.
Four point three million, and it will be. four point three million, and it will be one point four million next year. So the, what is coming off the books, glad you ask, the two thousand and nine limited obligation bonds, and they will fall off in June of this year. So our current outstanding debt relates to the qualified energy bonds, the one garage and the Broad Street Garage. That's what is still on the books.
Low debt environment.
So that will bump up our capacity substantially.
But then we put that back into, making this facility for the capacity building garages.
Yeah. And then we also have a, a general fund operating subsidy. We do this with our enterprise funds for administrative charges, and so we're charging back, um, we're charging the parking fund for what we do for them. And that amount will increase by about thirteen percent, which is indicative of all the other numbers that are going up exponentially. We did a reconfiguration of that.
When we sold them, when you asked. Yeah, Liberty, did that just roll into the parking fund or go to?
It's to the parking fund.
Just sitting in the park, it's not like we accelerated debt payments.
Yeah. Okay, now we're gonna move to our local.
We're gonna kind of think what we found our capacity on parking, especially with things rolling off. We could build up to probably two to three new parking garages. Can still have a pushing there for. Very strong.
Yes. Okay, our local option, a local accommodation tax fund, our revenue growth is budgeted at twenty-four percent above the prior year. So let me stop and tell you that we had been very conservative in our budget for twenty-three, just coming from COVID and not knowing exactly what was gonna happen. So that one is, um, really coming in much higher than we had anticipated, and so we're adjusting that back to pre-COVID levels. Currently, um, we have a revenue share with Visit Greenville, that amount is still budgeted in here. We have an annual transfer for art and public places and for the funding agreement for floor field. And we are not planning any additional CIP investments at the convention center, which we had mentioned earlier. We do also have a furniture replacement at Tate Plaza that'll be about seventy-five thousand.
We talked about embracing that transfer to the Arts and Public Places Committee, but last time that's.
Double it.
That number's been, that seventy-five thousand number's been a plugged number for a long time.
It's been that since twenty fifteen.
And frankly, the program has matured tremendously since then, so.
So, so the case is this, that first of all, the local tax carries it, you know, we're, we have a growth coming. It's been seventy-five thousand dollars since its inception, and that was around twenty fifteen. Okay, that's ridiculous, um, because that committee, what they do is provide matches to all the public art you see. They're matching it based on applications, but they are also responsible for maintenance on our pieces. So it, and, and these pieces to make them shiny and pretty is a whole lot more than I would think. Double it for sure, and it needs to grow over time, given the amount of art we're adding to the collection and the burden of that budget line to provide maintenance on it.
Arts is a major, major lifestyle, um, need in, in our community. And it has been a major part, given for the young people that they do the art and public stuff for. And so it has done, and for us, to keep the same phrase, but not only dedicated, really doesn't limit them in what they cannot do, for they play a right role. A lot of people come to me just for what we have in arts and activities.
There has also been a suggestion that I've heard, and y'all, y'all may or may not have heard it, but there's a, a want for art along the Swamp Rabbit Trail. And we cannot, am I, am I, and we cannot really invest in that unless we invest more in this community, in this one.
How much is the revenue share with Greenville?
So. So, um, I don't have the exact dollar amount, I can get that for you, but it is, um, seven.
Point seven three is.
Hold on, my brain's thinking again.
So the discretionary is the five sixty. What's the, is it? I want to say two something, but. There's a certain amount we have to do, and then there's a certain amount we choose to do, and then choose to do it for five sixty.
But what we have, we need next week, y'all will have some ideas, you can't figure it out today. But have some ideas of where.
But he, he doesn't care the source, right?
And I am interested in the required versus our discretionary, and later's fine.
Yeah, we'll have that for you next week, get that for you next week. Lastly.
Go ahead.
So, so at the risk of sounding like I have your idea stored on you.
I cannot believe you don't know what Tate Plaza is, Ken.
So you didn't want to ask?
It is the entrance to Falls Park.
Okay.
Russell, did you know that?
And.
Of course, everybody.
That is a.
Thanks for taking one for the team.
That's a West Point leader right there.
That's right.
Two point eight million non-discretionary money to Visit Greenville.
Non-discretionary, that's not touchable, but five sixty is what we, yes, choose.
Is that state statute? Is that where that comes from?
The city has a statute and the state does, so we assess so much local accommodations tax, the state does.
Okay, we got, we got the feedback on the, um, arts and public policy.
Yes, duly noted.
I don't think it may not be enough.
I don't think it is.
Well, I think they do have some pending grant applications, which may be rather significant.
When we start there.
Fine, it's fine, it's fine. That's free of my way. But that is hospitality.
So just a quick overview of our budget calendar. Um, next week on the seventeenth, we'll have a meeting here at noon. And our second workshop, and then our planned first reading of the ordinance will be May the twenty-second with adoption on June the twelfth.
How long is the noon one gonna be?
No more than probably, probably hour and fifteen max.
I'm, I'm not one to complain about fewer and more efficient meetings, but that seems a little trimmer than previous years. We normally do three budget workshops.
This one was a little abbreviated, but hopefully it goes with you.
Yeah, I, I mean, to Will's point, I, I would love to be able to say not necessarily have a hard stop next week.
Just respectfully, your time, we're here as long as you like.
Okay.
Well, we didn't really have that retreat, treat. We run the code in the retreat, and what I don't want to do is shortchange the departments, present what they have to present to us and ask what they need for us. In other words, I don't want any department getting cut from workshop two.
We've tried to build in what we showed you here, what was in their requests already, so when we hear from the police department was, you know, what do they need? So you got.
I mean, we have a hundred and ten page presentation.
Slides that basically provides all of it.
So we can review that if we have specific questions.
If you have specific questions, come prepare, send them in advance or bring them to the next workshop.
Okay.
If we need two hours, we're here as long as you like.
Send a meeting here, can we meet right near Tate Plaza?
And sit on the furniture they already have.
So, so John, is it, I mean, is it reasonable in this early stage budget preparation to say twenty-two FTEs out of a thousand person workforce?
It's a pretty large investment.
Two, two point two in percent increase pretty much.
Bottom line, yeah.
Yeah.
Plus or minus a thousand.
Good work, good times, y'all.
Thank you, we'll see you.
Good job, Karen.
Been a long weekend.
For many of us.
So you, you, you saw the Easter sunrise without planning it, wasn't that bad?
I was very happy that the sun was shining, Saturday was an ugly day.
It was. I feel like doing, I can do anything.